February seventeenth, and we have a rule call, please.
Uh, Councilmember Coffee.
President.
Councilmember Olson.
Here.
Councilmember Turkey.
Present.
Councilmember Dow.
Here.
Councilmember McDermott.
There.
I have a couple of visitors with us this evening that are not necessarily scheduled to speak to us, but would like to recognize Mary Martin, Regional Director for Governor Mike Braun is in the back with us this evening. And Aaron Dove, Regional Director for Senator Young. Welcome to the meeting this evening. We're so glad to have you here. Uh, can we have a request approved of the February third minutes? Motion second, any discussion?
I'm speaking.
Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Uh, ordinance number seventeen seventy twenty twenty five, an ordinance amending the zoning map of the city of Angola. Eighteen fifty North State Road eight twenty seven, third reading.
Mr. Mayor, having reviewed the recommendations of the Plan Commission of taking account of the comprehensive plan, current conditions, and character of the structures and uses in each district, the most desirable use of the land and its current proposed zones, conservation of property values throughout the city, for responsible growth and development, I move to adopt the proposed zoning change.
Okay.
Motion second, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Ordinance number seventeen seventy one twenty five, an ordinance of the city of Angola authorizing the issuance of waterworks revenue bonds for the purpose of providing funds to pay for the cost of certain additions, extensions, and improvements to the municipal waterworks of said city. The issuance of the revenue bonds to provide for the cost thereof, the collection, segregation, and distribution of the revenues of said works, providing for the safeguarding of the interests of the owners of said bonds, other matters connected therein therewith, including the issuance of notes in anticipation of bonds and repealing ordinances inconsistent herewith, second reading.
Second.
Motion second, any discussion this evening? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Ordinance number seventeen seventy two twenty twenty five, an ordinance of the city of Angola authorizing the issuance of sewage works revenue bonds for the purpose of providing funds to pay for the cost of certain additions, extensions, and improvements to the sewage works of said city. The issuance of the revenue bonds to provide for the cost thereof, the collection, segregation, and distribution of the revenues of said works, providing for the safeguarding of the interests of the owners of said bonds, other matters connected therewith, including the issuance of notes in anticipation of bonds, and repealing ordinances inconsistent herewith, second reading.
I move.
And seconded.
Motion second, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The other unfinished business this evening. Hearing none, we'll move on to new business. I am pleased to announce that the state of Angola or the city, state of Angola is strong and vibrant. The city's industrial and commercial partners report strong economic activity. We are enjoying low unemployment, exceptionally high workforce participation. MSD school system is enjoying very high graduation rates. The graduates are either continuing with higher education or through the pathways program moving directly into the workforce. Trine University is enjoying consistent enrollment growth along with continued physical expansion every year to accommodate this growth. Cameron Hospital is constantly increasing individualized healthcare services. Our community has seen exciting increases in activity hosted throughout the year by Angola's nationally recognized downtown Main Street program, the City of Angola, and the City Park Department. I am pleased to report that these events continue to increase in popularity and attendance every year. Angola certainly is a great place to live. The city of Angola is fiscally strong. We have adequate capital reserve to meet our anticipated needs. And due to some capital projects that were canceled or delayed, a temporary suspension of hiring, we finished twenty twenty four well under budget. Since the start of the year, we have filled all positions except one. As a result of this healthy financial condition, I again will request that the council transfer monies to the rainy day fund. Looking ahead, the city has several expensive long-range projects like North Wayne Street rehabilitation that I believe could be partially paid for from the rainy day fund. This will help reduce the need for possible increases to revenue generation that could burden ratepayers and taxpayers. I'd like to thank Ryan Herbert, our city clerk treasurer, for his wise fiscal guidance and his cash and investment management skills. The Angola Building Commissioner Scott Lehman reported or issued twenty eight more permits in twenty twenty four compared to twenty three. We had forty five point eight million dollars in new construction in the city last year. This was a decrease of nine point three million due to fewer institutional commercial projects. We added nineteen new single-family homes and opened two large apartment buildings. Attorney Kim Schout did a great job last year pursuing unsightly properties. He can walk a very fine line between property owner's rights and protecting the neighbors that surround him. It's always been a very delicate balancing act. He also handled numerous other legal issues that come up in the day-to-day operation of the city. In twenty twenty four, we restructured the Office of Economic Development and Planning, establishing Director Rita Hicks with oversight of our newly hired city planner and community coordinator. The role of project coordinator that was formerly part of the Economic Development Department has been moved to the engineering department. Rita currently is in talks with several developers to create sites for single and multifamily homes along with commercial development. Rita and Isaac Lee from the Steuben County EDC have been instrumental in structuring an incentive package that enabled Vestal Corporation to expand locally despite the energy issues caused by NIPSCO. I've requested the city staff and the redevelopment commission to work together to consider expanding our tax incremental financing district to include several blocks of our downtown area and several parcels on the north side of the city, including the Saranova Development Property and others. Chad Ritter, our street commissioner and his crews implemented more than one million in improvement projects to rebuild streets throughout the city along with constructing more than thirty eight hundred linear feet of ADA compliant sidewalks. In twenty twenty five, I'm anticipating more than double that project investment, the two and a half million, to keep our city streets, curbs, and sidewalks in safe and good condition. Along with a never-ending job of keeping all the city-owned property clean, the crews logged sixty six hundred miles picking up leaves, brush, and yard waste. They also logged seventy three hundred miles keeping the streets snow and ice free. Chief of Police Ken Whitmire and the Angola Police Department saw a four and a half percent increase in call for services last year. Despite executing two hiring processes, the department was not able to fill our one open police officer position. Although this issue is not unique to Angola, we will be looking at ideas to make this becoming, uh, make becoming an Angola police officer more attractive. We have made improvements to the personnel areas of the PD to make the facility more welcoming. And finally, through generous donation, the department was able to purchase an armored ATV for an active shooter situation. Although I'm pleased that we're prepared for the worst, hopefully this vehicle will never see any use. I am pleased that Fire Chief Bill Harder came out of retirement last year to take over leadership in Angola Fire Department. As part of this new leadership position, I have asked him to accomplish several things. One of which is to continue working with our township partners to more equitably fund fire protection. Another is to continue building upon the success of the Angola Fire Training Academy. This fantastic program in cooperation with various schools enables young people to qualify to work in fire safety service upon graduation from high school. Chief Harder also made significant changes to dispatch protocol in order to improve coverage and do it more efficiently. Our superintendent Matt Hannah and his staff hosted fourteen major events in our parks department, or our parks last year. From March until the end of October, something was always happening in our parks. The Fourth of July celebration alone drew thirteen thousand six hundred people to the city's largest park. Not bad for a city of only ninety four hundred people. This year, we will see a long-anticipated opening of the Sheets Family Park. Due to the hard work of our friends at the YMCA, Steuben County Government, and Steuben County Foundation, the project is now fully funded, including an adowment that has been established for the park's maintenance. Per an agreement with the YMCA Board of Directors, the park ownership will transfer to the city upon completion of construction. In addition, in twenty twenty five, I would like to the park board and the city council to consider making plans for a modest park facility at Central Lake. The IT department head, Mark Marple, and our vendor Exos has kept our computer system virus and malware free. In the first quarter of twenty twenty four, they replaced our antiquated phone system upgraded to an IP-based system. They also eliminated the need for a cable internet connection for media com. In twenty twenty five, the IT department will assist our community coordinator in updating our city website to make it more appealing and user-friendly. Water Superintendent Tom Selman and his team repaired nineteen breaks in seventy five miles of aging water mains in our system. We've been making plans for water main replacement for the most problematic lines. The first on the replacement list is North Wayne Street and is scheduled to be done in sometime in twenty six or twenty seven. Calro Lane Main is also on the list. The city water consumption by our users has been slowly decreasing as low-flow fixtures become more common. Last year, the average was eighty four point four gallons per day per person. Unfortunately, Tom has announced his plans for retirement this year. His years of dedication, expertise, and commitment will be missed. He has been working closely with our human resource director, Sue Esmond, to create a seamless succession plan. Waste Water Superintendent Jeff Gaff made numerous improvements to our collection and treatment facility this year. Two of the major projects that were started was a much-needed storage building along with the elimination of the Easton Street Lift Station. Jeff reported we did not have any chloride discharge exceedances in twenty twenty four. Chlorides cannot be removed by our water treatment plant and are highly regulated by IDM. It has been a problem we have been dealing with for several years. City engineer Amanda Coe and her department had an exceptionally busy year in twenty four. From engineering and design of our bike path extension on the southern city limits to the utility extension going north to Bokegan State Park. There is not a project in Angola that our engineering department doesn't oversee. In twenty twenty five, the department will continue to cooperate with the state of Indiana to complete the design work for the reconstruction of North Wayne Street as previously announced. This will not only rebuild the road and replace aging water pipes, but it will also construct a long-needed pedestrian sidewalk with traffic signaled crosswalks. We have heard this before, but the biggest problem, the challenge the city has going forward is the supply of energy, specifically natural gas. We can't grow our community, our local economy without energy. I'm grateful for the efforts of all our partners, Steuben County Council, commissioners, and our representative in Indianapolis. Working together, we must and will solve this problem. I'll end with this thought. My time in public service, I've had the pleasure of working with many talented and dedicated individuals. The Angola City Council we have today is the most, has the most diverse background of any council I've ever worked with. We have legal, engineering, business leadership experience, and educators. And I want to thank all the council members for their service. With the contribution of our department heads, dedicated employees, and council, I'm confident our community will continue to see success. Thank you, council and our employees. Our employees are absolutely phenomenal. It's, uh, in the mayor's office, and I've said this before, it's almost like magic. You think something should be done, you look around and they've already done it. They're just amazing people that we do it. All right, ordinance number seventeen seventy three twenty twenty five, initial appropriations ordinance for the city of Angola. Local roads, bridges, matching grant fund, first reading.
Move to approve.
Motion second, any discussion? Man, did you want to fill in what we're doing here?
We're writing.
Um, yeah, so we opened the bids last meeting for the Community Crosses Project. The local road and bridge matching fund is where those projects are paid from. A little bit of error on the clerk treasurer's part. I didn't round up enough in case the bids came in a little bit high, so when we did the budget, we didn't budget enough to cover the entire amount of the bids. Cash-wise, there's no problem. We just have to increase our appropriation so that we're square with the Department of Local Government Finance, so.
They approved everything for that.
They approved the original budget. Um, we have, we have to do the original.
Do the submission all over again on this part?
Yeah, we'll have to submit this additional. But I don't believe this one's a, uh, this fund is a, not a DLGF-reviewed fund. So once we pass it, we're, we're good to go. It's just that we have to pass it and report it. We are square budget-wise.
Motion second, any more discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Resolution twenty twenty five eight eight eight, resolution of the county council, the city of Angola, determined that there is zix, exists and a, and need opportunity paying a twenty twenty three Silverado truck for use by a fire department. It is substantial savings to the city. This is something our fire chief is still wanting to change some of the things we do and how we do business. Ryan, would you like to explain why we need to have this resolution?
Yes. Typically, when we make a purchase like this, uh, it would have to go out to, to quote, we would have to, uh, solicit quotes from at least three different people. Unless a situation comes up where you find something that would be a substantial savings to the city, then you, there is a, a portion of Indiana code which is cited in the resolution that allows you to purchase it directly. Basically, you just have to pass the resolution. The city council has to determine that it is substantial savings.
What's the substantial savings based plan? I mean, where's that? How do you calculate?
That's up to you guys to determine whether this is substantial or not.
So is it based on like what you, if you bought a new one?
Um, a brand-new one, and I believe that's what, uh, the fire chief is basing this purchase off of, uh, what were the savings as opposed to having to buy an entirely new vehicle.
Chief, we kind of want to talk the numbers real quick.
Yeah, so I also provided Councilman McDermott some pictures of our present response for our water rescue and rope rescue, if you want to look at that. And we were able to get our hands on this particular truck and bring it in-house last weekend. And my crews went through and kind of started sizing up the outfitting of it to see if that would work before I came back to Ryan and said, okay. So in the midst of this, what I want to do is I want to bring a truck in that I can utilize for my water rescue and rope rescue response. And you'll see in the pictures what we have now and what I would like to take our department to for efficiency and effectiveness. And so what I did, I come across this truck. It's a twenty twenty three. It's got very low miles on it. And to go out and purchase similar, the couple quotes I did get was eighty three to eighty nine thousand dollars for a brand-new one. Most recently, and I was gone last week, most of the week, so when I got back, I had an email just for a chassis alone. And individually reached out to with sixty thousand dollars.
So this, this one that you're quoting out has that box on it? That looks actual?
This is the, the complete truck, and actually it's sitting down outside of the fire station right now.
Is this all stored? It looks like you've got this stored in lockers now, Bill? Is that what?
Everything you see there, if I'm right, right, will be in the truck.
Yes.
And out of the station.
So there's a picture there of stuff in lockers. There's a picture there of everything hanging. And then we got our hands on the truck and started just, obviously, we can't mount any of that because we don't own it. And so with that thought in mind, I had talked with Ryan and the mayor uh, in reference to using some of my Q cap funds to purchase this. And with that thought in mind, we sat down and we come up with a vehicle replacement schedule for my bigger trucks that we have and to make this all work. And so here we are tonight. I hope that helps. We had budgeted, just to add to it, we budgeted a million dollars this year to add a, a new engine, replace one of our older engines. Chief would like to hold off on that, so we will probably not move forward with that acquisition this year. And he wants to move forward with this much smaller one to get something fitted in, loaded, so they don't have to run back to the station, grab whatever gear. They can just grab a vehicle and it's already there.
Yeah. Is that?
Correct. A little bit of history going into this. Over the years, we've had three different water rescue trucks. And they've all retired out due to age and wear and tear and non, non-mechanical, right, mechanical issues that. And so we've retired, just since I've been on the department, we went through three different trucks. And we never pursued a replacement to bring us back into an effective response. And so I come across this truck and I thought, what a win-win, right? My opinion is it's reasonable in price and it's, it's going to fit our need.
And some of this money can come out of what we had already budgeted.
So Bill, the, the price of a new one you said was eighty three?
Between eighty three and eighty nine, um, it just varies.
Is there a used market at all? Is this something unusual?
I haven't found any good used ones to match this one.
And if you buy a new one, is it outfitted with this equipment on top, or do you have to put the, have somebody put it on?
Well, it all depends on the different vendors that you find that can supply these vehicles. Some of them have them pre-made or already sitting ready to go.
What you priced, what were you pricing? Just the truck from?
No, I actually reached out and priced two similar trucks of this nature. And they ranged in price from eighty three thousand up to a price tag eighty nine thousand. And then I was pricing a third one, and I got a price on the chassis, and it was sixty thousand alone, just with the chassis with no box. So we would have to go reach out and.
That's what I was wondering.
Right.
The box is separate from the price that you got for the eighty nine? And this has the box?
No, the eighty three and eighty nine were complete trucks similar to this. But I'm looking, you know, a truck like this nature is going to last us well, well into the future. It's a low-volume, high-priority call.
How long is well into the future?
I'm going to say a good ten years, if not longer. But it's a low priority, very high, or low-frequency, very high priority call. And to be effective and efficient in our response to these type of calls, I just, my opinion and part of my evaluation since I've come in is we need to, we need to put some focus in this area of our response. We're set with fire engines. We're set with command trucks. We're set with boats. But as you can see in those pictures, all my water rescue equipment's hanging on racks or on the shelf or in a locker. And that's just not effective. That's not effective to when we get that call.
Mr. Mayor, may I address Councilman Dow's question? You ask, uh, is, who determines if this is substantial savings and, and why that matters? Ordinarily, uh, we're required to, uh, request bids or proposals for the purchase of, of things. And the reason is that we have to select the lowest responsible and responsive bid, thus saving and prudently managing taxpayer money. Uh, there is a provision in the statute that allows, uh, to, allows us to bypass that if there's a unique opportunity to effect a substantial savings for the public. In other words, if we can verify and certify that we're accomplishing the same thing, being prudent with the taxpayer money, we can go ahead and make the purchase. I looked at the paperwork and the numbers. I made the, the, the interpretation that this was a substantial savings that would fit under that statute. And it was close. Others may disagree. A judge may disagree, but really, the powers that be just want us to be careful with the taxpayer money. And, uh, in my opinion, this was a prudent, careful use of the money and fell within that statute that allowed us to bypass the ordinary process.
Is this from a dealership, from another fire department? Where?
It's from a, so there's a, a company in town that we're purchasing this from. It's an individual that has a heating and cooling company. And he bought this for his business. It wasn't what he wanted or needed after he got working out of it. So he dismantled that and went back to a, I call it a picker's type service vehicle, picker's van from American Pickers. For access and room and whatever service people do, right?
It's privately owned. It's not a dealership that's.
Yes. And in the conversation, the mayor asked that I have a third party outside of the city of Angola mechanics do a bumper-to-bumper on this. And so uh, we took it out to, uh, out west of town and say, there's a report provided if you'd like to see that.
What did they say?
They said it was great.
Okay.
Great vehicle.
Who was the reviewer?
Well, Bill's. Bill Stelling. Yeah, I have that here if everybody would like to see it. Um, so, yeah.
I, I, to me, there are two issues here, and I like both of them. One of them is there is a substantial savings. And the other one is if we're going to support the credibility of the fire chief, it's a no-brainer. So just my thought.
You're entertaining motion.
I, that's a question. Bill, you know, I respect you and I respect the part.
Absolutely.
I'm assuming the rope rescue is, concept is we have somebody walking in the ice and they fall in and so forth like that?
No, a rope rescue is a low-angle rescue down in embankment.
In a, in a well?
In a well, uh, anything of that nature would be rope rescue.
And the water rescue is?
When you would have somebody walking across the ice and they fall.
Our boat and.
You have somebody in the summertime that's struggling. And so that's the water rescue part of it. A lot of times you can incorporate both into one now.
Sure. In, in the city, we have three lakes.
Yes.
Including my backyard when it rains.
And several retention ponds.
In your experience as a, as a fireman and fire chief, how many times have you used those in Angola city limits?
All right, this is, this is going to date us, right? But when I was on the scuba team years ago, we were called down to the area of Sarah Drive, the retention pond, for two individuals through the ice. And within the city limits, that's the last.
Can I be, can I, can I accurate in saying most likely you're going to use the, this water rescue in the lakes in Steuben County?
I think.
Outside of the city?
Say that anywhere we have a body of water, the risk is there that we're going to be using it, whether that's city or anywhere in Steuben County.
Now, you know, my pet peeve is, is becoming our fire territories and, and township payments and stuff like that. Have we asked the county or the township trustees to help pay for a truck that is really being used predominantly for their purposes?
I can't sit here and say it would predominantly be used for those purposes. No disrespect to your.
Respect. I appreciate, I appreciate that.
I mean, the risk is there. The risk is with the sewer plant.
I'm with you. And I, and I, and I might, I might kind of throw, I'm just trying to figure out, if we're being asked once again to provide for material equipment that is being used not only for Angola but predominantly outside the city, tell people, I'm not denying that. How is it saying different than what we're talking about in terms of funding our programs?
I think it's regardless of, uh, where the need is, we need to have the best efficient, most efficient way because we're going to be there regardless.
Well, to add to what Jerry's saying, I look at it that we provide a service. This is just one tool to provide some of the services that we are talking about that we hand out at a low rate.
Popper's rate. I, I'm not denying, I'm not denying the purchase of the truck. That's not my point. I just, we, we've got to realize once again, everything that our taxpayers are providing subsidizes. Is subsidize other people.
Yes.
What we really need is to have some of our taxpayers have some of the same sentiments as you do right now.
Well, unfortunately, five of us do have some sense. And, uh, I'm, I'm not against truck. My, my point being is that we've got to find a system which is equitable purchases of everything like this.
The good part is you have it on record right now.
I understand. I just want to make sure.
Yeah, it's been on record lots of times.
I just want to show everybody. Did you see my point, though? I, I'm just concerned about that.
Right. I just don't want to mix two different topics of conversation into my request.
I understand. But my point.
A conversation of fire funding from our town line townships, and then we've got a conversation of a piece of safety equipment I need. And I don't want to mix those.
I'm with you.
So.
For those townships. For those townships.
I was gonna say, Mr. Mayor, I believe in the state of the city, that was one of the requests for the chief is to look at some of this holistically. Okay, thank you. I appreciate your comments.
I just.
Oh, I appreciate your comments.
I just, I just, I just want to keep sure and everybody is aware of what's going on here. I mean, at one time in the summer, we had the same situation, correct? It can't, nobody can be surprised.
To maybe add to this before you get into the vote, and I'm sorry to take up so much time, but we're actually, you know, I've got a really good guy that works in-house. We're gonna do emergency lighting in-house to save on the labor cost. Um, so, you know, we've got a great plan to put this thing together.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve. I want to be aware of this.
I'll second.
Motion second, any more discussion? Hearing that, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? John Cannon, representing the Office of Attorney, John Todd Raketa. John, you have to forgive me, I've got two different titles here.
Yeah, I know.
This is outreach and I've got one that says deputy director.
Yeah, we changed some, uh, things and names.
What is it?
Deputy Director. Deputy Director.
Deputy Director, very good.
I cover all of northern Indiana from, uh, I'll say East Chicago to, uh, you all. So, uh, and then from there, uh, from Route thirty north. And that changed a little bit with the, uh, with the name change. I, I appreciate y'all allowing me to, uh, to come tonight. I, I have some, just some regular, uh, words here that, uh, that the AG would like to express to you all. On, on behalf of the, uh, Todd Raketa, our Attorney General, the entire office, uh, I want to thank the mayor and, uh, the council and, uh, Ryan for working out a, a date that we could, uh, we could do this. And, um, as I start, I want you to, uh, know that, uh, the Attorney General's office functions as the official law office and law firm in the state of Indiana. So, um, and the, uh, city attorney there, uh, Kim was talking a little bit about that, so. And, and in fact, at any given time, there are twenty thousand active legal cases, uh, in the state of Indiana. As a state's, uh, law firm, we defend laws that are passed by the Indiana General Assembly, uh, defending our state laws, uh, if they're challenged in the courts. We defend agencies and office holders and state employees if they're sued in their official capacity. So if I do something, I need to sue me, uh, the AG's got my back, I think, I think, but that's, that's what they tell me anyway. We work to uphold criminal convictions, uh, when defendants, uh, appeal. Um, Attorney General Todd Raketa's office has successfully upheld verdicts against child abusers, murderers, rapists and other criminals as we work to protect victims, their families and all of you. As part of this mission, we provide various victim services such as address confidentiality program or the ACP program. And a, uh, which is a free service that enables victims of certain crimes like human trafficking to have confidential home addresses. Through our Medicaid fraud control unit, we were speaking of, uh, somebody was speaking of that with me. Um, we also work to ensure Medicaid dollars are spent, um, for healthcare and not for fraud. So far, Attorney General, uh, Raketa's office has recovered more than eighty-five million dollars in misspent Medicaid funds in the last three years. As you may see in the news from time to time, we work to protect Hoosiers throughout, uh, our state consumer protection division. We educate citizens and we protect them from illicit business practices such as deception, fraud, cybersecurity threats, data privacy violations and ID theft. We have obtained nearly one billion dollars in settlements, including hundreds of thousands from annoying and illegal robo callers. Hopefully those calls have lessened a, a little bit in the last couple of years. We also handle unclaimed property, which I'll speak about a little bit later. Uh, we help unite, unite hardworking Hoosiers with their own money. Our office achieves, achieved eighty-one million dollars in return in, uh, twenty twenty-three alone. We return one point five million dollars a week in, uh, in funds in twenty twenty-four. So we are very busy to carry out all this task. We have, uh, all this responsibility, the AG oversees four hundred people with the common purpose of serving Hoosiers with servant hearts. Under Attorney General Raketa's leadership, our ultimate mission is to serve, protect and defend Hoosiers by championing liberty, justice and the rule of law. So our overall mission, I'm glad to be here tonight and I want to talk to you a little bit about unclaimed property. I learned something a few, uh, years ago in the city of Hobart, Indiana, uh, that I, I handed out one of our placards that, uh, has our QR code on it. For the meeting and, uh, I always wait now to the end because once I handed this out, everybody in the crowd, everybody was scanning this deal and had no idea what I was talking about. Uh, but it's a, it's a pretty good story to tell, uh, about Hobart. Uh, this is good for the fire chief to hear. Fire chief that night in the middle of my remarks scanned this and found fourteen hundred and fifty bucks just for the fire department alone. What had happened is a grant, a grant had not. I don't think you'll find that money for that fire truck, but, uh, you might, you never know. Uh, but the, um, but what has happened, what had happened in that case was a, a grant that came in. Uh, and some of it, uh, was not approved by the federal government, so they sent a second check of that fourteen hundred bucks. And the clerk treasurer staff said, well, we already received this and they threw the check in the mail. And then never had it cashed. So eventually, uh, the money had to go to the Indiana Unclaimed Department because no one cashed the check. So those are just an example for the town and the city and, uh, for, for, for most of us in the room. Uh, maybe you've had, uh, some, uh, some money kind of hidden somewhere that we didn't know about, maybe a deposit that we put down. Uh, we got a, a NIPSCO turn-on, uh, fee and then you moved and they didn't have anywhere to send it back to. So after two years, uh, in some cases, in three years at most, uh, it goes to the state. And, uh, Ryan has to deal with that, I, I think, on a probably weekly basis of, of, of money that he's considered a holder of unclaimed property. And after doing his due diligence, after two years, in some cases, three at most, uh, he has to send it to our unclaimed, uh, department. Believe it or not, maybe I want to hold your seat here, but we have eight hundred and fifty million dollars in unclaimed property in the state of Indiana. We're one of the top five in the country, um, that, um, so that's why our big push is, uh, most every year, uh, we've increased it since the, uh, AG Raketa has taken over the office. One reason is we've done some fast tracking and some technology that can, uh, find people using, um, past addresses, social security numbers, driver's license numbers, uh, throughout the country. Uh, so that's why we are increasing every year, uh, the amount of funds. So I, I want to leave you all with some material, uh, but unclaimed property is, uh, if you would, ma'am. Uh, this is an older car, we don't have the twenty, twenty-four card out yet. But, um, you can use the, the QR code, code, or you can, uh, go to, uh, indianaunclaimed.gov. You can also text a number that's on the, uh, on the card as well. And, uh, we are pretty quick. I'll tell you a quick story about the, um, state fair. Uh, there's a gentleman had a booth next to our state fair, our unclaimed property state, uh, booth at the state fair. And, uh, when the state fair started, um, he talked to me and asked me about it and he scanned the QR code. He says, oh my goodness, a hundred and seventy-four bucks, uh, is under my name, is my address that I used to live at in, uh, Decatur, Indiana. Um, and that's how he lives in Indianapolis. By the time the fair was old, old, over, he came in with the check that he received. So in two weeks he got his money. And he got interest. He's sorry, he got about a hundred and eighty, eighty bucks, a hundred and seventy-nine, something. So it was kind of cool that in two weeks that we, uh, we, we got it. I didn't do anything other than what, give him the card, he scanned it, he filled wall outs, sitting there at the fair, uh, on his phone. And he got his check before the, before the fair ended, which about fourteen days. So, uh, if you have some, uh, do it right away and mayor, have all your department heads check if you would, uh, because you never know and there may be something out there. Uh, and, uh, maybe we could find enough money for that.
My wife and I have used it and received money.
Right.
I've, as a representative of my parents, so when they were still with us, we received money for them.
You have any questions about?
Is there, is there ever an end time?
Twenty-five years.
And then it cheats the states.
Then it goes to the state. And what we do, what we do most of the time with those is we send it to, uh, we, we, we have an eBay account. We put a lot of real property, say, uh, you know, there's a safety deposit box that is, uh, left, uh, by grandma and never told anybody that she had it. But she had all her rings in there or she had money in there or coins from the nineteen hundreds and such. Uh, and that goes on eBay after twenty-five years. So we're starting to get, getting some of that, uh, kind of swinging into that. So, uh, there's a lot of property, uh, you wouldn't, you wouldn't believe with a vault in, uh, in Greenwood. There's a room about this size that has everything logged and it's, uh, it's amazing, some of the prizes in there.
When, when the Attorney General says he obtained money back from a robo call, where does that money go?
Uh, that goes into the general fund.
Okay.
Just back into the general fund. Now you have to. Yeah, our investigators and, uh, and such spend a lot of time and effort and, and, uh, resources to, to break these criminals down. So, uh, we need to get that money back, uh, you know, somehow. Same thing with Medicaid fraud as well, goes, actually goes back into the Medicaid process, so the right people are getting it. But, uh, if, some people say, well, what, you know, wh- wh- where does unclaimed property potentially come from? There's a piece of property, uh, in Delaware County that's worth a million dollars, I mean, a piece of land acreage. And there's nobody for it, no family member, no one left. So after twenty-five years, I'll, I'll set there and then it'll go to, uh, to the state or go to a tax sale. That, that's a special one that has some special rulings on how, how to handle something like that. It goes down to, uh, our lowest amount is, uh, thirty-nine cents from the BMV. A few years ago, the BMV, uh, and the legislature decided that they would put that money into the, uh, into unclaimed property instead of, uh, just sending out a check because the check would probably never find its, its way to the right folks. Uh, but it does bog our system down a little bit, those, those kind of things, uh, thirty-nine cents. You know, a few years ago, the BMV overcharged us and it's class action suit, we all got about three bucks back or something. But, uh, somebody got thirty-nine cents.
No, they didn't.
No, they didn't. Check out, it costs seventy-three cents to send it.
Uh, you gotta love government.
Yeah, right. So, uh, just if you don't mind, just a little personal note, I, uh, I was a city council for eight years as well as a mayor. And, um, you all are, have a unique, um, job and, uh, you're probably never going to be, uh, thanked as much as, uh, that you should be. I was there and I understand, so from our office to you and from our AG, thank you for what you all do locally. Uh, thank you, Mayor Ryan and, uh, all your staff, uh, as well as all your employees. We know they're, they're outstanding because you can see the way the city, uh, looks after a snowstorm, uh, or in the summertime when it's just beautiful, it's a city and a state. So thank you all very much for your time.
Cancel our respects to the AG. He's, uh, one of the most, one of the most responsive state officials I've ever worked with. I call him or text him, uh, within an hour or two, I get something back from him. He's always been very responsive and helpful.
Well, hopefully you forget his number for a couple of weeks so I don't hear from him. Thank you very much, sir, I'll let him know. Thank you.
Yeah, let's see, request approval of the LPA consulting contract with Fleas and Vandenbrink Engineering, Water Engineering Services for city side, citywide sign replacement project in the amount not to exceed a hundred and thirty thousand dollars. And Amanda, I know this one is yours.
Yeah, so this is the, uh, contract for the federal aid project that we receive money for to replace all of the signs in the city. And Chad is here and has sat through this for forty-five minutes, so if he wants to say anything.
Bill, do you have anything to add to it? This will be just for the Water Engineering Services. Once it goes to construction, there'll be another process that the city will have to go through for construction inspection services, unfortunately. And that got away from allowing communities to score those together, so.
So was this every sign?
It's every warning and regulatory sign in the city.
Stop signs.
Stop signs, speed limit signs.
And the only reason I say that is we were part of that million dollar project on our street with the sidewalks and the street and we have a new stop sign. So will that new stop sign be replaced even though it's new?
Yes, we are replacing everyone. All the signs have to meet certain requirements and as they are up, they age and they fade. The reflectivity, um, decreases, so this will be a blanket, um, new sign inventory, all new signs so that everything is compliant.
Where do all the old signs go? Pacements?
Old signs have a.
I like the dorm rooms.
Well, there's a couple of street signs in my office.
You can have some more.
Form boards to the old trucks.
Yeah.
So you have.
Mr. Mayor, may I ask a question?
Please.
Amanda, if every sign is going to be replaced, what is the purpose of studying? What is, what is the engineering study going to study?
So, uh, we have to have plans and tables and this has to be bid out like any project. So someone has to compile all of that together, um, because this is. Yeah, because this is federal aid money, there's a lot of reporting requirements, things that indot requires.
Is it like the inventory then?
Thank you.
These are the federally grants, so is this a safety grant, so ninety percent federal funds, ten percent?
Correct.
So the hundred and thirty is the total cost, but we're only responsible for ten percent of that?
Yes.
I mean, we're responsible for a hundred percent, but we get reimbursed, I should say, ninety percent of that cost.
Across the project.
Million something.
I would move that we approve the contract.
Second.
Motion second. Discussion. Hearing that, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Clerk Crager, statutory statement and cash reconciliation ending January twenty twenty-five is presented for your information. Reports, Clerk Crager.
Uh, just a reminder, reminder, we're set to have a, a special council meeting again next Monday to open the bids for the Pocagen project.
Seven o'clock standard time, is that what you're thinking?
That's what I've got, yes.
Yeah?
Nothing, Mr. Mayor.
Rita.
Uh, my new city planner started today, uh, her name is Grace Hesman. And, um, so if any of the council members are out and about and you want to step up and meet her, she would be glad to be there.
I can't wait to arrest this gentleman.
That's why I'm so free. Do you have anything for us?
Clerk Department, as you spoke about the chlorides issue, we are getting ready to switch over to a ferric sulfate. That is happening tomorrow. We will get the product tomorrow as a test run and start running this week and see how the plant reacts on whether it's going to work or not. Do help with our chlorides, we will be able to get rid of the ferric chloride. So other than that, shop's going good. Cold weather slowed them down this week, but be back.
Out there.
Yeah.
Chief?
Nothing, Mr. Mayor.
Sue?
Nothing, sir.
Nothing, ma'am.
Ma'am?
No report, ma'am.
Amanda?
No report.
Chief?
No report, sir.
Uh, request approval of the allowance of count table vouchers seventy-two thousand seven 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 through seventy-two thousand nine eighty-two, totaling one million five thousand fifty-eight dollars and seventy-four cents, which includes interfund transfers of thirty-eight thousand three hundred thirty-four dollars and eighty-nine cents.
Move that we pay the bills.
Second.
Motion second, any discussion? Hearing that, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Any other new business?
It's just a comment, but the street department guys did a great job with the ice and snow last week. So, although you did bury my front yard several times, so stop it, don't even go there. And you guys, they agreed, they did a great job, so people will be able to drive around as fast.
Yeah, they, they do a great job of keeping our city streets ice and snow free. And we have not had to enact our emergency snow ordinance this year.
I think you have to say it, well.
Okay, I get it every time I go to the police.
Chiefs, the chiefs.
It was four inches, right, four, four inches and we have not had any.
Uh, next common council meeting, Monday, February twenty-fourth.
Twenty-fourth, next week, a week from today, seven PM.
We are adjourned, thank you.
I would stop the West.
Yeah, we got off some last year.
I'm so sorry.